Okay, just give me a moment here, gonna go ahead and. Share my screen. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So, welcome everyone to today's study session for the Board of Adjustment. Today is May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And looking at the cases coming up for the month of June. If it all turns out to work the way it's supposed to, we should have, we would have three cases. All three cases are appeals. The first two items, one is, the first one is a. Appeal of the Director's Decision to Approve a DDO. And that DDO was for reduced setbacks for a multifamily development that was located at. Forty-four, forty-one East Bellevue Street. So that one is ready and should be scheduled for June twenty-eighth. The second case that we have is an appeal of the zoning administrator's determination. This is related to a land use classification. Of a property addressed as two sixty-seven East Blackledge. That is the Povello House of Tucson. It's a, it's a, it's a use that's not clearly identified in the Unified Development Code. And so the zoning administrator has the authority under the UDC. To determine what classification that land use falls under. And so the zoning administrator made a determination that this land use classification for this property. Is a home occupation, adult daycare use, so there's, the appeals are coming from. A neighbor. To the two sixty-seventh East Blackledge and. Is contesting that determination. The third item, and this one is the one that's pending, we won't know for sure unless. Ms. Bonham has an update for us, but it's the appeal. Of the zoning administrator's determination, and this is related to. The city's application of the undergrounding utilities within a gateway corridor zone. So for maybe some of, most of you may know about this one, this is the. New transmission line that's proposed to go from Keno to. I think it's up to, up to support the U of A, the substation near the U of A. And it's proposed to go through Keno and Campbell. And it's required to be undergrounded per the UDC. So that is the appeal that will be, if it goes through, will be going on June twentieth as well. So just a heads up, all three appeal cases. In one hearing, it could be, it could be a lengthy hearing for that day. So just be prepared for that. So I, I guess I just wanna ask Ms. Bonham if she has any updates for us regarding that third item.
No, this is Jennifer Bottom, the City Attorney's Office. I don't have any updates now. I expect to receive an update next week.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, before we move on to discussion of today's case. Is there any questions regarding the upcoming cases for next month? I have none, okay.
But after we complete the study session for discussion on the case to be heard today. I have a. Question that is on the future schedule of July, so we can wait till we get beyond the. Benton Study Session, and then I, I do wanna ask you a question.
Okay. So let's go ahead and move forward. Today's case is C ten twenty-three oh two. Nine nine zero North Benton Avenue Metal Garage, located at nine nine zero North Benton Avenue. As we, as you all know, this is a. Reconsidered, this is cases being reconsidered, so we are treating it as a new public hearing. So. We will be reading into record the staff report as if it's a, is it for the first time the board seeing it. So this is the citing question located at nine ninety North Benton Avenue, it's currently zoned P for parking. And the applicant is proposing to construct a metal garage over the parking area. To provide security and just secure, provide security for employee parking. And for personal parking. And so the variance that the applicant is requesting before the board is to allow the metal garage to be constructed. Within increased height from sixteen feet to eighteen feet two inches. As measured to the midpoint between the eve and the ridge of the roof, all as shown on the submitted plans. So to date, we still have not received any comments. For this new reconsidered case. And so at this time, I will go ahead and open it up to the board for any questions.
Yeah, Mark, this is Mike Marks. I do have one question. I wanted to ask you, and that is the site plan. I, I noticed that there is a. Revised site plan, and it's one that doesn't show any. Striping of parking spaces, doesn't show any. Driveways within striped parking spaces. Which is different from what was shown to us last month, which was. A site plan with several parking spaces. Shown with an orientation from the northwest to the southeast. And a. A driveway along the northern. Strip of that, that site. Is this site plan sufficient for review by the city?
May I answer that question?
No. This is a study session, and this is not for the public. I want to ask Mr. Castro. Is this site plan sufficient?
So, Mr. Chair, the, to answer your question, so th- this is a parking lot, and there's a garage that's gonna be over the parking lot. So there should be. There should be the striped parking spaces shown on the site plan. So I, I do agree with that, and that that should be, that should be shown on the site plan. I'm not sure if it just, if it did not get placed into this. Revised packet, but I do, like you said, I do recall seeing that from the previous. From the previous submittal.
Mm-hmm. I realize I'm not allowed to speak, but the zoning review process asked us to remove those stripes. This has already been reviewed by the zoning department. And it was in one of their comments that we were given.
Mr. Castro, I've got, I've got another question. Your staff report. Recommends denial. Could you explain the basis for that recommendation?
Sure, Mr. Chair. So the whole reason for the increase in height is for, is to accommodate an RV. And so with typically within parking garages, we don't see. RVs parking in those structures. It's mostly vehicles, standard pickup trucks. That, that go into these parking garages. Now, it's. I mean, the parking is allowed, but. You have to remember that the wanting to have the RV parked is, is a self-imposed hardship. Technically, you could provide the building to accommodate such a, such a vehicle. It does take, it's a different design, I understand that, it would cost money, but that. Cost is not something that the board can consider in making a decision, so. It's not necessarily, it's, it's not the minimum necessary to afford relief.
Okay, and then lastly, I think lastly. The requirement. For a reconsidered hearing is. The. Demonstration of new evidence, new facts. Could you identify what they might be at this point?
Mr. Chair, that is not staff's purview, that's actually the board. The board makes the decision on whether or not the evidence is new. And since there was a, a vote taken that, that the evidence was considered new, we're reconsidering this case.
Okay, and so just a procedural question. Not that I don't wanna. Recite the, the standard. Comments, which I make before each hearing, but since I made them. Before the prior hearing on this request. Would it be appropriate or necessary that I repeat those comments? Today, or? Or is it, should we dismiss, dispense with those preliminary comments?
Mr. Chair, since the, since we're considering this as a new case, yes, you will need to read that, those standards in.
Okay, and then every time I say this is the last, I've got one more. I'm not sure what we mean by new case. Does that mean we ignore everything that took place last month?
We, the board looks at this case as if there's new evidence presented, so it is considered, just like I said, it's a new case, so. We're starting new. It's a fresh start.
Okay, okay, that, thank you very much. That's all I have to ask at this point.
Okay, I think Ms. Paulus had her hand up first, and then we'll get Ms. Schuber.
Uh, thank you. I had a couple of questions based on the discussion that was in the staff report. You mentioned that the parking zone cannot be used for storage. Is there a zone that could be used for storage of vehicles?
Yes, Ms. Paulus, that would be any of your commercial zonings. We've seen one allows it, but it needs to be within an enclosed building. When you get to C two or C three, that, that's when it allows for outdoor storage.
Okay, and in the land use code, is there a distinction or a difference? Between parking an RV and storing an RV? I'm a little confused about the difference.
Ms. Paulus, that's a good question, but it's not clearly identified, but I think I'll defer to our zoning administrator to address that.
Afternoon. The UDC basically makes a definition for parking that it is the. Storage of parking of vehicles, essentially. There's not a distinction of when it changes from parking to storage. There is a use in the UDC known as commercial storage. But that's typically associated with warehouses or data storage facilities or things like that, or. Maybe a contractor construction yard where they're storing. Building materials could maybe be commercial storage. So in our mind, or in my mind at this point, if. The applicant is parking his vehicle or parking his trailer there. For normal incidental use, I would still consider that parking. If there's storage of other materials or other things happening there, then. At that point, it would need to be reevaluated. Was that a sufficient clarification for you, Ms. Paulus?
Yes, thank you. I'm still a little confused over the staff discussion based on that, but. I'll try and figure it out. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I, so I had a question related to. Related to the part about whether or not this is a self-imposed hardship. So the reason why I voted. That I felt there was additional evidence to reconsider had to do. With the applicant's email that we, that we had received as part of the reconsideration request, and at some point he mentions. A documented medical sensitivity that requires. Immediate and frequent use of the restroom, and to me, that really. Convinced me that it was worth another look to see if this RV is something that's a necessity. And to me, I, I kinda felt like I had a hard time. Characterizing the RV as a self-imposed hardship, given a reference to a medical condition. However, when I was rereading the application, I didn't see any mention of it. I just saw it in the email from, from Mr. Decker. So I wasn't sure if we're, if we're able to consider the emailed information that Mr. Decker presented. Or just the application. And if I can get clarification about self-imposed, and if that encompasses medical conditions as well.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I think I had it myself muted. Okay, so Ms. Schubert, so. You can use that, the email information, since that is, that is considered the new information. So that would be applicable to this public hearing. And. And to clarify, self-impose, you asked the question if the medical. If the medical issue is considered self-imposed, I, you know, I don't see that as a self imposition. Yeah, because that's. That, that's just my opinion, unless Ms. Hamlin has anything to add.
The only addition that I would make is to clarify that the use of the RV is not the subject of the variance request. It is the height of the structure to store the RV. So. The self-imposed hardship is the construction of a structure that with an increased height. There is nothing that has been stated by staff that. The parking of the RV cannot happen on this property. And it could happen with another structure of a lower height, but again, the subject of the variance request is whether an increased height is warranted. In this situation.
Thanks for the clarification, Lisa. I was making the jump from RV to height. But you bring up a good point, because I was led to believe from reading the application. That that height was absolutely necessary in order to house the RV. It had to do with. With the sliding doors and the twelve-inch increments and a thirteen-point-six-foot height needed, so fourteen feet made sense. But if you're saying that it was actually staff determination that a smaller structure. Would accommodate the use, and of course, the RV can be parked on the property now. Thanks, that's really helpful feedback.
I will just add. A little bit of clarification for you and maybe a suggestion that. During the regular meeting, you may wish to ask some clarification on that height about the structure of the applicant and the architect. We as staff are not architects, so I can't speak necessarily to. Structural integrity or construction types or any of those things. But what we can state is that a structure meeting the height limits in the zone could be constructed. I don't know whether this particular RV could fit into that structure, or whether a. Flat roof structure is appropriate for the storage or parking of this type of vehicle. Those are clarifying questions that may be relevant.
Mr. Dawson, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. I think. I think also just, just answer the first one is that this would be allowed. Were it the correct height, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm not. Going on, because I'm not really sure I necessarily agree with the fact that this is a self-imposed condition. Certainly, if. He wants to actually fit an RV in there, and he wants to build a garage that would conceivably fit an RV, whether he's got one or not. It would, almost the way the thing is structured, like I said, there's a lot more money involved in. Getting a clearance there, but that. What's going on with those doors that they have selected. Is that the only way to get those doors in and allow the, a vehicle of that height. To roll underneath that door. Is that it has to have, it's a rolling door, means there's a, there's a large roll of, of. Door above the door, and that requires the additional height. So for this particular type of structure and that particular type of door, the only way to get a. Vehicle through it or a door on it is to allow the raised height. And so I'm not really sure I see that as a self-imposed condition, it's simply. Will allow the building to do the job it's supposed to do. And if it. In case at some date of the future that they wants to put an RV in, he'd be able to. It's really, so for me, the, the amount of height involved is just very minor as far as I'm going. So again, I'm not sure I, I agree with the staff position, this is a self-imposed condition. That just if you wanna build that structure so that it can do what he wants it to do. Is. He should. I, I don't see any problem with it. I know, like I say, I don't necessarily agree this is a self-imposed condition. I can understand why we thought so the first time around, but I'm not sure I agree with it at this point, so. Thank you.
Ms. Bonham.
Sure, thank you, Chairman Marks, members of the board. I would just remind you that the purpose of our study session is to. Ask questions of staff. But we should reserve deliberations and discussion of the merits of the case for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions regarding this case?
No, not for me.
Very well. Mr. Marks, did you have anything additional before we adjourn and then go into the public hearing?
Yeah, it's regarding the date of the July hearing. Could you tell me when that will be? I'm gonna be. Out of town for a while towards the end of July. And I just wanna know whether I will be able to attend or not.
Just give me one moment, I'll check. So the public hearing for July will be on July twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, well, I definitely will not be in town.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll conclude the study session here. And we'll go right into the public hearing unless anybody wants to take a quick five-minute break.
Not necessary here.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, if we're ready for the public hearing, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Hamblin for a roll call.
Michael Marks.
Here.
Bruce Dawson.
Here.
Jesse Lugo. Miranda Schubert.
Here.
Irma Duran. Bonnie Paulus. Bonnie, you're muted. Could you, thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Then I will read the preliminary comments. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining the meeting, you are giving consent to that recording. We have one item on today's agenda. After these comments are concluded, I will turn to staff and ask them for their staff report. Board members may then ask questions of staff. And after that, the applicant or his or her representative will have time to speak. Other people, first those in favor and then those in opposition. Will have an opportunity to speak as well. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. If there is any opposition. Throughout this period, board members may ask questions of the applicant and other speakers. When all of that testimony is completed. The board will close the public hearing, discuss the matter, and then vote on a motion made and seconded by board members. All of those who wish to speak will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff. Or members of the audience, and all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself. And turn your camera off unless you are addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to Superior Court of Pima County. By filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk's Office. Within thirty days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process. Please contact the Superior Court's Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. At this time, I'm going to ask city staff to raise their right hands. And I. Need to ask. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point. I want to ask staff to introduce the first case and to give us a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Today's case is C ten dash twenty-three dash zero two. Nine nine zero North Benton Avenue Metal Garage. Nineteen sixty-two Investments LLC. Nine nine zero North Benton Avenue P Zoning. The applicant's property is an approximately zero-point-one-six acre parcel zone P parking and is currently developed as a paved parking lot. The applicant is proposing to construct a new metal garage over the parking area. The applicant is requesting the following variants. One, to allow the metal garage to be constructed with an increased height from sixteen feet to eighteen feet two inches. As measured to the midpoint between the eve and ridge of the roof, all as shown on the submitted plans. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objection or adverse comments. Planning and Development Services staff recommends denial the applicant's requested variance. It is the opinion of staff that the special circumstance applicable to the property is self-imposed. And that the variance requested is not the minimum needed to afford relief and the least applicable. Of the UDC provision which is in question. To date, we have received a total of zero approvals and zero protests. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castro. I think all of my questions were answered during the study session. Do any of the other board members have a question for Mr. Castro right now? No, I see everybody shaking their heads no. So, thank you, Mr. Castro. We'll move on to the petitioner. And is the petitioner present? So we have.
I am, yes.
Do we have two speakers? We have Valerie Lane and Robert Shelton, is it?
Decker.
Decker, I apologize for that. Decker, I don't know, I apologize for that. Are, are you both planning on speaking?
Yes.
Okay, why don't, why don't I ask you to both raise your right hands and do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, who is gonna start it?
Uh, hello, thank you for your time today to hear us. Would it be okay if I share my screen with you?
Yes.
Uh. Okay, you can see the Google map?
No. Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I just would like to um, zoom you into the part of town and, and so you know where we are located. This is a Speedway. You can see my mouse moving. Okay, Speedway Boulevard and Swan Road and. The site is located one block in from Swan Road. Um. This is Mr. Decker's uh, accounting office across the street and um. All around him, this is a residential neighborhood. And again, this is Swan Road, so we have larger scale um, commercial buildings all along here. Um, now to the north and south, the here and here. Is a two-story and, and here, uh, two-story apartment complexes which will be taller than the building we're proposing. Um, his. Property is here, there has also been some solar um. Shade parking and a steel fence installed on this lot which serves the Institute for Better Education here. Um, we have an alley for access behind the parking lot in question and um. There's currently, you saw in the photographs, a, a chain link fence with razor wire and a gate around it. And this, this area of town, this parking lot is, has been subject to vandalism and other sorts of things over the years. Um, and Mr. Decker works pretty hard to keep um, at least his portion of the neighborhood here uh, clean and, and well cared for. Um. So this parking lot functions as overflow parking for his. Uh, employees when they need it and also storage of his RV which is um. He, he utilizes as a, as a mobile office. Uh, Mr. Decker will speak to that use a little more when I'm finished. Um, and I'd just like to. Make you aware that this here is the parking lot that Mr. Decker's um. Customers, clients and um, his, his employees can use. There is a solar panel shade structure here which would prevent being able to fit an RV in this lot. Um. Okay, I'm going to stop for a second and then share. Uh, you can now see uh, the drawings, um. Oops. You see the, the, the site plan drawing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, this package has been submitted and reviewed by the zoning department and all comments have been. Um. Addressed to them, so this hearing is the last step and so the drawing that you see. And the changes that you've seen uh, uh, from the last submitted to this one were directly requested from the zoning department. Um, so. We've got uh, handicap parking uh, on the exterior of the building in the front. We are including. A new landscape buffer right here with trees um. Specified and um, we have rainwater harvesting to capture the rain from the roof. That will continue to water the new trees and the surrounding border of uh, existing oleanders. Um. And we will extend, there's an existing sidewalk on the north and the south of this lot and no current sidewalk here. So where you see the stripes. Um, we will. Extend this, the existing sidewalk. So these are provisions we've made to. Um, improve the, the streetscape. Um. Now, I, I will say that, you know, people using the sidewalk or walking across on, on the other side of Benton. Will not perceive the increase in height that we're asking for. It's quite minor. Um. This edge of the building, which is this long elevation here meets. The exist, meets the requirement for sixteen feet that the UDC um, allows for. Um, and then we worked with the metal building uh, engineers. And in order to get a free clear space inside which maximizes maneuverability. And to acco, so to accommodate the depth of these steel beams, this steel structure. This beam down the center, we need. A column here. And a column here. And um. And so that, that structural depth is, is one thing. And then the garage doors themselves are rolling garage doors. They go up into the ceiling. And we've chosen doors and structure to the minimum capability that we can get it. So the two foot, two inches that we're asking for is the bare minimum and str, and. As to what we need to accommodate the height of the vehicle he's, he's parking in there. Um. And again, I think there. Was a question about the door placements, so this column in the very center is required. And because there's an alley, we include a door back here so there could be a drive-through function. And the, this is just painted striping on the ground, so this second door accommodates the need if there was ever something that needed to turn around and, and leave out that door. So. Um, the arrangement of doors is sort of a symmetrical balance to look toward the street and also um. It's a functional. Uh, decision. So, uh, does anybody have any questions about the physical nature of the building?
I don't have any questions about the physical nature. I think I do wanna ask you, could you summarize the new evidence? That uh. Is necessary to support a reconsideration.
Uh, I don't think there's a change in the. What we've presented in terms of the physical and technical nature of this building. Um, there were clarifications made. In terms of the use of the RV and its relationship to Mr. Decker's CPA business. And so again, um, I will allow him to speak to those things and. Uh, or, or let him speak to those things in just a moment. So again, um, I can answer any. Any questions that you might have about the building itself.
Well, I'll defer to other board members, uh, just if any of them have a question for you on that subject.
Um, well, I see hands in the air, shall I? Let you.
Yeah, there's a, no, no, let me uh, uh, recognize them. I don't know the order that they were placed up there, but let me start from the top. Is that uh, Bonnie uh, that has a hand up?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Marks. Um. What I would like to know, Ms. Lane, is. If you angle in parking of employee vehicles. Is that possible if the RV is also parked in that structure?
Yes, ma'am, um. Let me zoom in a little bit. This building is eighty, eighty feet long. Mr. Decker's RV is less than thirty and so it would take up, uh, you see these columns kind of mark. Uh, this is twenty, forty, sixty, eighty feet. Between columns, twenty feet each, so his, his RV would, you know, fit here and, or, or even this door doesn't need to function all the time. So his RV can sort of sit here. It can also be parked in this direction and it leaves this entire rest of the. Um. Rest of the building open. Um, I do have the old drawing that shows, um. The angles of the parking spots. Again, the zoning department asked that we remove them from this. It was not. Uh, a necessary implementation. Uh, that's. Wait.
And one last question about the structure itself. If it, is it possible for a vehicle to come in from Benton? And exit into the alley on the east side of that building?
Ye, if, yes, if they want, they come in, in here. And leave out of this door, that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Schubert, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. Um. So I, I heard you say Valerie that um, that the height of the building was kind of the minimum required to accommodate the RV and the doors. Um. But I just wanted to circle back on that and double check and. Um, get a sense of, you know, whether you exhausted like all possible art alternative designs um, when coming up with this plan like. If there truly is no opportunity to reduce the height of this building and still be able to um, accommodate the RV.
Um, yeah, we did extensive work back and forth with the, there's an engineer that works for this metal building manufacturer. Um, there's a. Limited number of local the metal building manufacturers, so um. We. We worked back and forth and expressed um, the height requirement and limitation. And so our first designs, we, we tried very hard to meet sixteen feet at the midspan. And um. We couldn't get the garage door to this corner essentially. Was a problem and so we ex, we explored the idea of doing, um, I hope you can see the hand, um, a shed roof that did something like this. Um. And moved the door over, but uh. It made the building much, much taller. And so again, we felt that this was sort of the. Um. The most appropriate scale for its location and shape. Um, and again, the perception of people from the street. I don't think that this height difference is gonna be perceivable and the long, this, this corner is, you know, the longest elevation which is here. It, it meets the requirement. So I just, I just think that like the difference of. It's really, you know, two feet right here. I, I don't think it's gonna be perceivable to the eye. Um. And we also, the one other thing we looked at were um, a different door, doors that sort of function more like a um. Uh. Like a, like your front door of your house that swings on a hinge and there with a door this wide and big. They're very difficult to open, first of all, and you could put them on a. Automatic door opener, but it limits the usable space inside building a lot. Um, and they're very expensive compared to a rolling door. Rolling door is pretty standard for this kind of application. Um, and again, we looked at two different rolling types, uh, two different functions and this is, this was the one that yielded the le, needed, required the least amount of space.
Okay, is that uh. All you're planning to say at this point and, and is it time for Mr. Decker to uh, to speak?
Uh, I've, I've got a question, my hand is up.
Oh, Mr. Dawson, I apologize, yeah, weren't you?
No, I, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with what Valerie has just said in response to Bonnie's and uh, the other question. Um, so uh. I'm gonna withdraw my question. She satisfied my concerns about. Uh, the building and its height, so thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. I'll defer now to Mr. Robert Decker who owns this property and um. I, I know you've already said it before, um, but I'll just remind. Everyone, we're only asking for a height variance. The use of this space is allowed in the parking zone and um. Has been functioning like this for a very long time. Uh, and so Mr. Decker will speak about. The use of the RV and how it's integral to his business and um. Answer those questions for you.
Hi. You want me to state the name and address? Are we good to go?
Yeah, why don't you start with your name and address?
Hey, Robert Decker, four six four six East Second Street, Tucson, Arizona, eight five seven one zero. So what I'd just like to do is answer some of the questions or expand on some of the stuff that was asked of Valerie. And um, one of the ones was new evidence presented. Now. At the March twenty ninth meeting, Valerie. Was presented with a lot of questions about the RV. And parking at my office. Well, she didn't have knowledge of that. Her, you know, she's to design, she's the architect. She was uh, to design and the engineering of. This project, but there was a lot of questions about that. That she didn't have the answers to, that I have the answers to. So I do feel. There was new evidence that uh, wasn't available to be presented. So I'd like to expand on some of that too. Um. One of the questions was employee parking and I think Bonnie was getting a little bit frustrated. With some of the answers on employee parking and then distinguishing me as an employee and that sort of stuff. So I'd like to expand on that. At my office, there is ten covered parking spots. I have five employees. Full-time and one part-time. That includes me. So that is six employees, so that leaves an extra four spots for clients. At our busiest time during tax season, the most we ever have here are two clients at a time. And that's when they're coming and going and they cross over. Very seldom do we have more than that. So the four extra parking spots is sufficient. For operating the business. The parking that we're talking about is overflow parking. It is used sometimes there. The, actually, it's company truck, it's also my truck. No other employee's truck is parked there almost all the time. In, in there. Also. When employees use that spot is mostly just if we're traveling out of town. And we have to leave a vehicle at the office. We do park our vehicles in there because it is fenced off with the razor wire. It is more secure. Other than that, it's really very. Needed for overflow parking. Uh, the operation of the business. With the ten covered parking spots is sufficient for what we need. So I hope that answers your uh, questions about the parking. And then the other thing. This seemed easy to me, a legally. Any legally licensed vehicle you can purchase, the maximum height is thirteen and a half feet. And I'm requesting to build a garage. That. Would support any legally licensed vehicle, which also includes RV. I did go in uh, how the business uses. The RV also, the business is me, it's my name on the door. Everything I do, I live and breathe this business. Uh, I, it's me, I can. Reiterate everything in my email, but I do think you guys read it. I don't think I need to go there. Um. So I don't see self imposing, um. Oh, also I want to expand, I'm adding security. There's a lot of homeless that are started moving in the neighborhood and there's crime that goes along with it. I want, I want the security so I don't have the break-in. And I'm willing to spend money and it will also make the neighborhood look a lot nicer. I'm open for questions.
Any questions of Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Decker, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. Are there any other parties? Out there uh, that wish to speak on this case? There is uh, one box we have here that's called Sandra's iPhone. I'm wondering. Is that some person that is here for this case? Sandra.
Yes, I'm here.
I'm here as well, Caroline Hanson, I'm the new president of the Neighborhood Association in which Mr. Decker's property is.
Okay, so we have two people, uh, very good, very good. Well, why don't we start with Sandra? Why don't you turn your uh. Video on and your uh, audio and uh, tell us what you, well, let me swear you in first.
Okay.
Are you there? There you are. There you are. Now the audio.
Okay, we good?
Yes, yes.
Hello.
Have you raised your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Sandra Carranza, forty-six twenty-nine, East Third Street.
Okay. Um, well, why don't you, uh, tell us what you have to say?
Um, I was one of the, um, neighborhood people that objected. Um, I since then have met with Mr. Decker, have talked to him, looked over what he was proposing, um, looked over and saw what he, how he was going to construct his stuff. And I do think that it will enhance the neighborhood. I do think that it may even help deter some of this homelessness that we have with these burglaries and break-ins of all of our, uh, stuff around here if we just have one more building that is secured. Um, so I do feel more comfortable in saying that I am for this change.
Okay, okay. Um, very good. I don't think, uh, uh, well, I know I don't have any questions for you and, uh, I'm looking at the other, uh, board members and it looks like none of them have any questions.
Okay.
So thank you for your input, let me move on to.
Okay.
So, Ms. Hansen, if you could turn your video on and your audio on.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Yeah, if you can raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and would you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Caroline Hansen at six-thirty-four North Columbus Boulevard.
Okay, and, uh, why don't you proceed?
Um, so I'm the new, uh, president of the Midway Village Neighborhood Association and I just wanted to show up and, uh, support Mr. Decker's, um, request for a variance. We are in favor of it as a whole, the, um, the other board members and the neighbors in the neighborhood. We do agree that this would be, um, an asset to the neighborhood and and, uh, we'd just like to show our support.
Okay, okay, thank you, that is very helpful.
Thank you.
So, um, I'd like to move to close the public hearing and then ask board members, uh, if they wish to offer some comment to the other members, uh, to initiate a discussion or if somebody wishes to, um, move right into making a motion, um, this would be the time. I see Mr., uh, actually, I see a hand in my box, I don't remember putting it up there. Um, Mr. Dawson, uh, go ahead.
Yes, uh, uh, I would, I would like simply proceed to, uh, grant him, uh, move a a motion, a motion to grant. Uh, and in the case of, uh, nine-nine-zero North Benton Avenue Metal Garage, nineteen-sixty-two Investments LLC at nine-nine-zero North Benton Avenue. Uh, I move that we grant the following variants in case C ten, C ten dash twenty-three dash zero-two allow the metal garage, uh, to be constructed with an increased height from sixteen feet to eighteen feet two inches as measured the midpoint between the eve and the ridge of the roof. Uh, all is shown on the submitted plans, subject to no conditions, uh. The evidence, uh, presented to the board shows that there are special circumstances which are not self-imposed, which are applicable to the property and, uh, support the granting of the required variance. Uh, the variance with the conditions, uh, will not mean material detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood and is the minimum necessary to provide relief. That is my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those, uh, in favor say aye.
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 And, uh, the chair says aye, and so it carries. Well, just for the record, all those oppose say nay. And not hearing any, the, the motion carries unanimously. So that completes that matter and, uh, that completes everything on the agenda today. Unless staff has, uh, something they want to say at this point, um, we'll, uh, turn our, uh, our, our video and everything else off.
I just have one item I'd like to mention, the board did previously request we, um, transition to in-person meetings. We are still in conversations with the city clerk's office on how to make that happen. So I just wanted to let the board know that we were working on that, um, based on that prior request.
Okay, very good, I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Um, if that is everything, we'll close the hearing. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.